Okay folks, good evening. A little bit past 6 o'clock, 6:04, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Call first for motion to approve minutes of August 12th, please.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? I noticed a couple of typos and a couple of just little minor grammar things which I will take full responsibility for as having drafted the notes myself. You know, it kind of says "over to glory" after the meeting. But I suppose it probably will instead, and you can trust me that it will be non-sustainable. But, uh, anything else? All those in favor? So minutes are approved, public communication tonight. David!
I'm good.
We're well, how are you?
Glad again that I showed up. Two things I want to talk about, one is Vermont Gas and the other one is a strategic plan. I know you heard all this before, but I'm gonna keep talking about it. The last thing I ask, are you people gonna hook up to Vermont Gas? And I kind of got a feeling from some of the board members that, gee, that's kind of rude that, you know, it's... This is a feeling that I got. Because it's a pretty philosophical thing, and it is really... I'm an interbeaton on the gas line, so I see all this communication, I know how much attention is. But anyway. My point at the time was what we should do is if the gas does come to Virginia, whether it does or not, we should put it to the voters on this next vote that you guys are talking about. Would you wanna install gas in the school system if it was available? And that was my question, and it was kind of, nobody really took that. And I think we should at least ask the voters, would they be willing to consider the economic value of it? And at the time I talked, if we're gonna do any modification, and there was some discussion about modifications to our current boiler strategy, and we had some communication offline about, or in an email, about maybe going to pellets. Because it's locally sourced and all that sort of thing, which is absolutely fine. I have a little small local business and I know how valuable local customers are. And, uh... So, anyway, my suggestion was whatever we do with our upgrades in our equipment, it should also be compatible for gas if it comes. That was my only comment there. And apparently you're looking at locally sourced pellets, which is fine, I mean that's a great thing to do. I went back and a lot of things that I hear from these meetings, you know, I take it for what it's worth, and then I go back and I look at it. And a couple of things. One of our big suppliers of... I looked at the McNeil wood fire place, and if you read their... They run their electrical generating plant with woodchips. And if you look at their consumption and what is produced in the state of Vermont for scrap wood, they could build three of those plants and not use any... Not cut three down, just the scrap lumber, trees that are taking off limbs and stuff like that. You can take your stuff up there and they'll process it for you. So there's a lot of local Vermont products that can go into that woodchip facility, but they don't burn pellets. One of the things they did in 1969, 1989, is they got a contract with Vermont Gas for backup. So they run gas in addition to woodchips. That's a footnote. I checked.
Just bringing it back to our school though, is you pointed that we should be looking at gas versus pellets, and we shouldn't be making a specific decision on that, so we have an idea of whether we're gonna be getting a gas pipeline into this area. I mean fundamentally, you want us to ask the citizens.
Yeah, I think you should ask the citizens. Should you look at that?
I'll tell you, my own perspective on that is that we should defer the public service board on a public good determination on that. If it is, then it becomes a financial calculus. In terms of our public body, I'm not even sure that the voters need to opine, but that may be, that's my own bias.
Okay, yeah, no, okay, and it should be, well, it should be.
Could we clarify that even further?
Well, I think Curtis was actually prepared to speak a little bit to it right when we hit the facilities update.
Okay, well, let me finish my comment about the McNeil plant.
If it bears, yeah, if it bears to our...
It doesn't, actually. Other than it uses Vermont products.
So it's a source for, if this school were to go with gas as opposed to pellets or wood product, the wood product still has a place to go that supports our citizens?
No, I'm trying to make a comparison between locally sourced and out of state stuff. I call the local, or a local pellet supplier, and you know where they come from? They come from Virginia in Canada. And the bulk of it, in my opinion, comes from Canada. As Vermont Gas is gonna come from Canada. So if it might be, you might buy locally, just like you might buy gas locally, but it's coming from, it ain't local. So it's really gotta be a decision based upon, I think, economics, and that's my comment on that. And maybe you knew that, I don't know, but I...
I think Curtis tried to speak to it during the facilities update a little bit.
Okay, alright.
We just spoke about that about 20 minutes ago.
Okay, alright, I didn't mean to blow on that, but I just...
That's why I wanted to sort of get that out, so...
Okay, I just wanted to say that, you know, what I hear here, I kind of go back and research, and it, there seem to be some contradictions there. Gas, local, you know. The other thing is a strategic plan. I think we all fully understand in today's environment, the mess you can get in without a strategic plan. And I don't have to say much more than that. We, our school system, and I think the school people do a great job, and I've said this before, you're stewards of our money to give us kids a good education, and you're stewards of our money to protect it and to spend it properly. You're doing a great job, but I don't see you fixing the long-term problem, and that's we got too many teachers, we don't have money to fund the ones that want to retire, we were, I think, maybe $2 billion, that's my guess, I know it's well over a billion. Underfunded, we've gotta fix that, and I want you people to come up with a strategic plan to tell the voters, how are you gonna get there? And, you know, I go through your four-point plan, and it's wonderful. Part one is fix this, the roof, $500, $800,000, five-year, they voted on it, they gave it the money, because that's what we needed to do. Part two is to come up with a maintenance plan to fix, I have to go...
A renovation plan?
It's a capital revenue plan. We should have been doing that right along, and you guys, the new guys on the block, you're doing the right thing. That's what we should do. The third thing was to go get all the facility upgrades that were voted down earlier and refinance the five-year plan. That makes no sense to me at all. I bet everybody in here probably goes out and refinances their home every time, I don't know why you do that. I don't know why you don't pay off the five-year plan. And what I would suggest, or the other thing is, in no one way you're gonna go for another budget of, I don't know, how much? There's a guess, $2 million? $2 million bucks? And you're gonna refinance, you're all, you're on, I think you're on the wrong track, and you're gonna... Well, if I remember right. And going through the four-year plan thing, you're gonna refinance the five-year plan. That, like I said, doesn't make any sense to me, and then on the four-year, on the fourth part of your plan, you're gonna go for more money to finish what the voters have already voted down. It's a rubber stamp, it's business as usual, and there was no strategic goal.
I'm gonna take the acting chair's prerogative, I'm telling you that the voters did indeed vote down some of the repairs to this school that are drastically needed.
Oh, you understand that, you gave it money to fix it.
The auditorium is now closed for use. You've heard that the auditorium is closed for use, so we must...
I know, and that's a shame, unfortunately.
We must find a way to put a facility together that our students can benefit from.
And that's part of the plan through.
And I think my communication was clearly not on point and not specific or sufficiently specific. If you weren't, if you didn't see how we're trying to repackage the roof loan into the $2.00 million work that must be put back in front of the voters this November. There's no reason to carry two notes, one five-year one that's very expensive, and one 20-year one that's not as expensive, when we can package those together. That's, to me, that's basic finance. I don't think we're doing it wrong, but, you know, I want to hear from other folks too, if that's the general scenario.
I understand, but let me tell you, my, what I would, if I were in your position, I would let that five-year plan get paid off, we've already voted it, you know, we're gonna give you the money, you got the money to do it, you've done it. When the 20-year plan comes up, don't go buy another thing. Go for two years, how much should we pay a year for that? On that? It's gonna be a couple million, a million and a half on the 20. But what we're paying now, under $9 million? Roughly, is it $1 million? A half million dollars. Okay, so if we don't pay that for two years, you can pay off the five-year loan, probably, it's paid for, you put some money in the bank, and you hire a consultant to figure out where we will be 25 years from now. I know you, all you guys, don't have the skills to do that, and your volunteers, we shouldn't ask you to do that. Get some consultants who can go take the demographics and figure out where we need to be, and work with the state. You know, we're on an unsustainable course, we're... And I don't want to sound like a broken record, but go hire the people who can tell us where we need to be. And, you can, you can do it, it's a plan. I'm not complaining, I won't complain without a plan.
Right, no, points well taken. I believe that our approach to funding the necessary improvements that must happen in this school in order for us as a community to own a school. I believe the plan is well put together, perhaps we need to communicate it better. I do want to say that one of the things that I think is difficult for all board members and public servants and administrations is when we're asked to answer to the larger statewide pressures or national pressures around education, some of that stuff, David, we can't solve at this stage.
And that's where I talked about leadership before. Invite the people from the, let's all go to the governor and say, hey, we want to fix this. Because the whole state's got the same problem, and they gotta want to fix it. They say we're unsustainable, we can't keep going this way, and there are people relying on the money that we got to fund every time, and I, I'm a broken record after this, so...
But I think, I think with respect to strategic planning, both at the facilities level, and that's an educational program.
That is not a strategic plan, that's a tactical one.
In terms of the facilities implementation and the educational program, I do think that this district has a pretty sound strategic plan for how to educate their citizens. We may disagree on how many teachers are the right number of teachers.
Well, yeah, we all listen to that, but I think, I, if you get, yeah, take an expert to tell you how to get reducing the number of teachers. I mean, I, I think teachers are great, I got neighbors on both sides, relatives, friends. I don't want to get rid of the teachers, but I don't want them to go bankrupt every time. And that's what's gonna happen if we stay on the same trajectory.
Thank you, I hope you'll come by when we do a building meeting, I hope you'll come by, because we are listening to what we have to say.
Invite me outside. Do it after 6:04. Carol?
Well, that was one thing we missed with the unified unions, is that if you go to the Vermont School Board Association site, they're, and I think they're the ones that did these studies, and they come in and they look at your student-teacher ratio, they look at your... I mean, it's really, and it was very detailed. ACSU, our neighbor, was the first one that I had looked at, but they're up, they're on their sites, and you could look at it and see. And they just give all type of scenarios in which schools can save money.
We tried hard to achieve unification in this district.
You did, but you didn't have this document that I think the business, the taxpayers want. And I think if you look at this, what other districts have done, it would be good for our district, and it would help us to understand the black and white of being good stewards of the money and all of that.
Any other public comments?
Jay? I know this was something, an email that came over this summer that Carol sent about a meeting with a couple of board members, and Tom and Kathy, and she wanted me to take minutes and those sorts of things, just about the discrepancies between audited amounts and carried forward amounts and those sorts of things. We don't need to talk about it here, but I just want to bring that back up, because I know things are busy in the summer, the school year started. Sorry. So, I don't know if we want to get together after the meeting, if we got the time to make that happen, or talk about it later, but I just want to make sure that that moves forward, because as a taxpayer, I'm curious about those discrepancies and, you know, those sorts of things.
So that's a very fair and good question, and you're right, Carol did put together a thoughtful request for a meeting. What Carol asked for was somewhat of a hybrid between a public meeting and a not a public meeting. And if we want to have a public meeting about the audits, we can, though I will say to everybody in this room that we did two months ago, and we spent quite a bit of time going through the past two years of the audits. Carol doesn't, you're not satisfied with the answers to the questions that you've gotten? And I think the only way is if you come and sit and just look at the books, and if you're asking for that to be a public meeting, then it's a public meeting. I can't kind of go there and represent the board, it's kind of a weird hybrid that you're asking for.
I know, years ago, up at Montpelier, I forget what representative took me up there, and I requested a meeting with the commissioner of DCL, and we went into a meeting, it was all recorded, and audits came out of it. But, but it wasn't, you know, in their committee, it was outside their committee.
Right, I understand.
This is a very difficult place for me to communicate, because there's, there's a lot of, what do you call, elephants in the room. But, so, and there's the control that goes on, there's the cutting off that goes on, and I just don't communicate, and it's something that you've been asking me to do for a long time, is to meet outside.
But, just let me clarify that, what you asked for in writing, the meeting where Jay would take minutes and publicly issue those minutes, is a meeting of the district voters, and therefore can't be a closed meeting, you have to invite people to it. If there's, if you're going there to examine people's business, you have to offer the people the opportunity, that's like an explicit procedure.
Well, you know, I don't mind if you, if you put me on your agenda and allow me to do, I think that's thoughtful, but I haven't, I haven't been allowed to really go through in a meeting and to have someone tell me, okay, the balance forward that we were just told last year is $250,000, what fiscal year does this represent? When I go to ACSU and I look at their reporting to their taxpayers, it is so easy to follow the fiscal year ending totals back into the proposed budgets. And why I don't back down on that is because the law requires audited surpluses to be carried forward. It's not, it's not a choice. Audited surplus have to be carried forward. I've heard people talk about that they change, so I've been including the guys, Mark, I, Jared, the general counsel. His opinion was that he saw audited surpluses very simple, is that you book it as a surplus. The only, what, the only thing he thought about that could change it is if it's wrong. And so, in the years that I've looked at, '08 to present, you have just numbers that are all over the place, they don't, they don't agree. So as a taxpayer, I should be able to look at the fiscal year total of our financial people, I should be able to look at the elected treasurer's total, I should be able to look at the auditor's total, and then I should be able to look at the total that's reported to the taxpayers, and they all should agree. If they don't agree, there needs to be an explanation, and I'm asking for an explanation of why the fiscal year totals do not agree, and why surpluses are not being carried forward.
Those are fair questions, just so you know, your request went in, Don, who's chair, Don respectfully got off of the board for personal reasons, he worked with, he discussed all the things carrying, and one of them wasn't able to do it anymore. And so, we've been kind of caught a little bit in limbo across our board here, have a tremendous amount of work to try and get the building work up and running, the roof work up and running, and so we had not been able to, you know, make a final, set up a final meeting with you, or make a final decision as to how it should come. But Jay, I think maybe you understand what I mean about, it's either, either you have a public meeting, or you're not.
Right, right, and what, it has to be a public meeting if there are a certain number of board members there, is that correct?
That is correct.
I mean, if I was to meet, if we were just to meet with one or two of you, that's not a public meeting, or am I incorrect about that?
Right, but what you're asking for is for minutes to be put together that are then circulated to the public.
Well, see, what I believe is...
And so that's the part to me that's a little bit odd, and it represents the hybrid that I don't get.
I don't think it's on your plan.
My understanding about this, and again, I don't have all the details or anything, so, is to prevent a situation from taking a lot of this meeting's time, because there's a lot of things that we have to cover, and going through the stuff with Carol, with a couple of board members, Wayne, and/or Tom, Kathy, you know, that sort of thing, to take a look at those things and get that explanation, and then to bring that, you know, condensed version to the, to a board meeting, you know, that gets presented in that way. So we're not taking a whole lot of time for this meeting.
That sounds fair, I just, it needs to be done legally, and what I heard was, didn't seem to square with me, but I may be misinterpreted.
And then again, that's not, I don't think that's Carol's intention at all, to do it in a legal manner or anything, but just have that smaller meeting, bring it back to the larger, you know, because maybe everything's in order and, you know, things are just, we don't have all the information maybe, you know, I mean, there could be a whole number of factors in this situation. The other thing I think that's important to remember is as we're trying to fix this building, if we have surpluses going forward from one year to the next, correct me if I'm wrong, but you can put that out to the voters to decide to use that surplus in a certain way, as opposed to just carrying it forward to help with the budget for the next year. Again, I don't know if you would, you know, the board obviously have to decide to do that, but maybe we could get the auditorium fixed, or maybe that's half of the roof cost, or, you know, whatever it might be if those surpluses are coming forward. So again, I think if some of this stuff can get figured out, it's gonna help everyone.
Let me ask you this, Carol. Can we wait? I know you've been waiting patiently, and at the same time, and Carol, at the same time, we spent two hours on this topic at the board meeting, two bet, and learned a lot about how the audit works, but however, can we wait until we have a chair? Because I'm actually not the chair at this point. I mean, is that reasonable? Or not? It just feels to me like it's appropriate for the board to have a leadership structure. I don't know if you all agree or not.
I think it would be helpful. I also want to say, Carol, I've taken your concerns very seriously. I did the math based on your last email, when I look at the aggregate of what is being carried forward based on actuals versus what our most recent estimate was, we're within about 12%. We're always working with estimates, so I don't see anything out of sorts. I think maybe there's an explanation that would be helpful, but I don't think there's anything nefarious, I don't think there's anything surprising. I think the surplus that we voted on for the FY14 budget ties pretty nicely to the numbers that you would put together. So I did do the work.
And, you know, what you can do is publicly tell me that you don't want to deal with this on this level, and it'll give me a better chance of stepping up. And so, so, there are other people, I just want, yeah, I just need some questions answered.
I really feel like I'm trying. I, the meeting that we had a few board meetings ago, where we spent a lot of time looking at the audits, was something that I requested on your behalf, that we drill into it and we get the details. I came out of that meeting feeling comfortable, I came out of that meeting exactly where Jeff was. I understand that you're not, and that's okay, so let us get our leadership structure for this board in place and figure out the best way to try and answer your questions. Is that fair? Not trying to stone wall, but there's a lot of work that has to be done, and so...
And, Neil, let me just clarify one other thing, I mean, I think the other piece too is if we can just figure out, you know, whatever we can do to just make it more clear, I mean, I think that's, that's the other piece. And it is hard when you're using estimates from one year to the next, when the audit is, you know, when it's not ready for it. I know you guys are really pushing to make that happen, and Kathy, you're working really hard to get the audit done as soon as you can, you know, so we're not discounting anything that you guys are doing, but it makes it hard for the public to follow that, you know, surplus from one year coming into the next year, or the deficit, or whatever it is. And so, just, that's, I think that's another piece, is can we figure out a way to make it more clear, you know, to see how that is working? Because right now it is really hard to look at all those documents and figure out, and do the math, you know? I'm impressed you were able to do the math, but...
I don't want to go too long in this topic, but I do want Wayne with your, Neil, can you talk a little bit about the audit committee that Tom has put together?
I can say very little about it, other than he has a couple names, and they have, I think Dave Tatlock is one of the people who will be involved in that, and that group is supposed to be constituted soon.
Can I just say something about that? So we do have a representative from each board, so there are four people, but for us to try and find a night when all four people can meet has been very difficult, and I would like for the first meeting for all four of them to be there. So I'm hopeful that the first week of October seems to be the first, the first night that I can schedule a meeting with all four of them.
What is the task of the audit committee?
Or what are their tasks to do? Is it coming forward or previous, they're gonna be reviewing?
Um, there's, um, there's fraud detection policies that we should have that we don't, so that would be one of their charges, would be to come up with that policy, and I actually have a model policy from our auditor, so we just need to sort of, you know, look at it and agree on that. And then there are some other items that we would talk about from time to time.
Are they gonna undergo a review of, related to Carol's questions and all, or this is just something brand new?
This is more policy oriented, I mean, I'm sure that they, you know, could consider that at some point.
Part of the point, in my mind, is listening to Carol's questions, which are thoughtful and reasonable, is to put together a group of members of the boards that actually, you know, make it their business to drill into the audits and understand from year to year, and maybe from that, Jay, can come this idea of a better, more clear communication string. I just want a mindful of time, and there's a lot of material, are there any other public comments on different topics?
I have a question regarding the auditorium, all of your guidance and so, but I'd like to better understand what happened with the inspection as far as why did we use who we used for the inspection? Once we had this information, how was that overrated, and who decided to close the auditorium based, faced on this? Once we had this information, how was that overrated and who decided to close the auditorium based on this?
That's a good question. Will you be talking about that for facilities?
We can.
Yeah, yeah, I think we do. Let us talk about that when we hit the facilities update under the, under the next part of the agenda. And hopefully you'll get everything you need. There are answers to that. Christina?
I have a question that's related to Mr. Hal and Tom. So I just, I understand just from last year that you two would be job sharing this year, is that correct? And that Tom would be retiring at the end of this school year?
That is his intention, yeah.
So I just wanted to put forward to the board that in terms of what comes next, will you start to, you know, search for a new superintendent at what point? Or how is that process going to work?
I think that matter will begin with the SU board. But I know that Tom had suggested to the board, the SU board previously, that at some point during December, January, or February, they would be making the determination of how they were going to move forward. And that will be entirely within their purview to take it whichever way they thought was appropriate at that time.
This school board doesn't have any influence on what that board decides?
It has influence on it, but I think the SU board is the one that would take primary responsibility for it.
And the SU board meets the third week of September? So it would be appropriate to raise the concern?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other public communications? Okay. Educational presentation, summer school report, who's up?
I'm sorry. For whoever's either, if you want to turn your seat around, there's also some here now. So I'm Beth Adrian, and I'm one of the, and I'm one of the co-coordinators of the summer program.
I'm Jill Strube, I'm the other co-coordinator of the sale program.
Summer adventures in learning, that's what we call our program, and it's a seven, twelve program here in high school. So, can I start?
Sure. This is just a breakdown of, we did have 95 students this summer who participated in the program. It was a four-week program. Breakdown of the grades they were in, and we did have, we were a little boy heavy, but that's okay. And we did for the first time have some students from Mount Abe, which is something new and different for us. Mount Abe came to us in May and asked if they could access our program. And so we met with Andy Capes of Villarreal and quoted them as sort of a pilot with the hopes of next year expanding on that particular aspect of the program. So just a glance at what our learners actually participated in. We had a credit recovery program for our high school students. The enrichment component was for our seventh, eighth, and ninth graders. PBGR is a beginning of our performance-based graduation requirements. Capstone was a new program this year for our eighth graders. Capstone is the program that is acting as the gateway now from eighth grade to high school. And we had some students who came and worked on those projects. And then, brand new also was our SAT prep class, which was very successful.
So for, and for this past summer for credit recovery, we offered in grade one, integrated two, world literature and American literature, which are our ninth and 10th grade English courses. Intro to physics and chemistry, Bio One, which are two of our core science classes, and world and US history, which are our ninth and 10th grade social studies requirements. And we purposely choose these ninth and 10th grade classes mostly because we want to, one of our charges is to make sure that our struggling learners who really need more hands-on learning have enough credits to go to the Hannaford Career Center. So of the 32 credits that our students attempted, 31 credits were awarded. So all but one, one credit was, one student finished completely, which is, has a, was our best success rate to date. Now that I've gone on, one of the, the model we choose is that our teachers choose the, the non-negotiable skills that they want students to have going out of those specific classes. And those are the skills that those students have to master in order to earn the credit in those classes in the summer. And then the other two, we, so then we offer a capstone and PBGR. So like Jill said, the capstone is our gateway from eighth to ninth grade. So really, this is kind of a credit recovery for some of those eighth graders who just needed a little more time to get that capstone project completed. And all six of the students that participated in that program finished and went on to ninth grade. And then, performance-based graduation requirements program, this is the, this pro, we have six students in this. And these six students this summer piloted our online portfolio process. And they worked on some individual projects throughout the summer. And they were self, they self-selected into the program and did a lot of project-based learning. This is a program that we definitely want to expand and really work on to improve in the future.
Enrichment opportunities this summer, as you can see, encoded a wide range from arts to academics to building things. We tried to include social studies, science, some math things were involved. All hands-on learning, really designed to get both reluctant learners and kids who just wanted something really fun and exciting and hands-on to do to come and spend some time at the school this summer. Just a sort of brief slideshow.
What's, what's the Athenian secret?
Athenian secret is a math program. It's, it's based on Greek, the Greek mathematicians. So the kids learned all about problem solving and the different Greek mathematicians, which then actually ended up leading into a Greek luncheon. We got Carmen Jokom involved, and the kids ended up doing a bunch of research and ended up preparing and serving a Greek luncheon for all of our students. It was absolutely spectacular, so. This is just a sort of a cost analysis of what the program costs based on the number of students, how much it costs per student. And then you can see the cost per student hour. Our numbers are improving, partly because we had 95 kids this year. And we're learning how to be more efficient. We're getting our, as we go, we're gone into the program, we're definitely getting better and finding better organization. Our cost per student is going down, which is a good thing. But our quality, I think, has been higher than ever in this summer's program.
Who gave you that course?
I'll be getting that. You can see all the different costs. This is just a brief slideshow of some of the things we did. Our canine care packages went to the Addison County Mean Society after the kids had sewed dog beds and dog toys and cat beds and cat toys, and we actually took them down to deliver the things that they had learned how to make. And we got a tour of the new facility, and as you can see, we made lots of friends. I ended up getting, coming home with one of those. We had farming garden with Bill Vanderwerken, the salsa that you had tonight. If you tried it, it's from the garden that our kids worked on all summer long. We were, had work on motors and engines, param mechanics. We also built and installed a turkey house at Teresa Smith's house. It's now been painted, and it's the nicest turkey house on shore in Addison County. It's purple and green, but our kids actually built it. And we brought it over in a giant trailer and installed it. This is the Greek luncheon, the menu, and you can see a sample of the food. Lots of people from Central Office came over and enjoyed it, and the food was truly amazing. Science, we shot off rockets, we made bizarre lava lamps. We burned dollar bills, but they didn't burn. It was amazing. That was a creation of Peter Staple for his class. And then Ryan came and he helped us the last couple of days.
So SAT prep was a brand-new program that we talked about for a couple of years of adding in and just decided last fall that we were going to figure it out and we wanted it. We had eight students participate in both the math and English portions of the SAT prep. And as you can see, their pre-test scores and their post-test scores all increased dramatically. The kids did 80 hours of SAT prep, 40 in English Language Arts, and 40 in math. And all of them increased their scores dramatically, as you can see from that. It was, and the feedback from the students was, you know, this was the greatest program ever. I can't believe that we were able to do this here at school, you know. And even one of our instructors actually said, he's done an SAT prep course before for, at a, like an outside program. And he was like, I can't believe the amount of time these kids were able to have in doing this, and what a difference. And the, and the kids didn't have to pay anything.
Well, my son, the boy was paying, and he was very reluctant to do this, but he wanted me to.
Yeah.
I mean, it was hard, you know, it was, it was, he really learned a lot through that process. So you guys did a great job of that. And he said the food was great, too.
So we were, we were really happy with the feedback from our SAT prep kids, the students. They, they really were, every single one of them said, I'm definitely going to recommend that my friends take this next summer. So I hope you offer it. And, you know, we already decided that we want to be able to offer, we want to be, because we like to keep our class size small because we think that's one of the reasons that our kids are so successful in our program. So, you know, we really want to be able to expand the number of kids we can serve in that program as well. So we want to add another teacher for that.
The food they eat in is perfect. We are an open site, which means that any student in the district who is under the age of 18 can come and get free meals at our sites. And this year, for the first time, we expanded to include VUES and the high school. You can see 3,974 meals served over the course of the summer is fairly, I think outstanding. The program did end it up with, in the, in the black, we made actually $1,047. This was a, we used, relied on the free and reduced kids, but we also got subsidy for the paying kids. Everybody got to eat all their meals for free all summer long, which is quite outstanding when you imagine how many kids would not have eaten without this program, so. Here's the answer to your question. This is how it was paid for. High school funds, we have a credit recovery fund that the principals have in their, in their line. The 21C grant, which is the grant I manage, which is the 21st Century Learning Centers Community Grant. And then this year, because Mount Abe was here, they also contributed to the amount, and that's our total budget. This includes transportation home for the kids at the end of the day. All the meals are included, all the teacher salaries, all the supplies, everything that we used for the summer program. Questions about that, or?
The VHS funds in that are through the A and WSU budget and not the high school budget, just as a point of clarification. I mean, they're all local funds, but it's, it's not a budget line except for the credit recovery in the high school budget. So looking ahead to next year, our goals for next year are to reduce summer learning less. That is one of our goals since, since we started the program, which was really just me and five students in the learning center the first summer. It's to reengage students who are disengaged in their learning. We find that a lot of kids who are disengaged come to the summer program, and they leave saying, wow, you know, I hate putting up for school during the school year, but I was up and ready to go every day because what we were doing at school was so much fun. Provide safe activities for students in an environment where they feel welcomed and provide meals for students, as many as possible. And then we have some potential dates for next year. We're still kind of in negotiation about when those would be, whether or not we can afford to do five weeks versus four. We know that research tells us that five weeks of summer program is really what the minimum for really reducing that summer loss. We know that our four weeks helps, but if we had an extra week, that would be even better for our students. And our questions and challenges, extended learning opportunity versus is it summer school? We're trying, we're still, one of our biggest challenges is overcoming, overcoming the idea of, oh, well, my, my student's not going to go to summer school. And we're really trying hard to make our program not be summer school, but be some sort, an enrichment opportunity for students that they want, that parents want their kids to come to. It just happens to be in the school building.
The status of our 21C grant? At this point, we are entering year five of our five-year 21C grant. I was at a meeting this morning, and a decision was made that we will be reapplying for that grant at a lower funding level, but there again is no guarantee that we will get it just because we are reapplying for it. So that will be pursued, and we will know about that next April. So unfortunately, it's going to be a while before we know how much money is available through 21C to contribute to a future sale program.
We really want to build on our beginning partnership with Mount Abe and accommodate what their summer needs as well. We really think it could be a great partnership, both in bringing our students together and providing more opportunities for them, but also in a cost-sharing way. So that not, you know, rather than both districts spending like a lot of money on a really great summer program, let's do one big one where we can share the cost of that and share teachers. One of our other questions and challenges is the status of this building and what work needs to be done here.
One of the things we did talk about was, we know that we get really good results from the sale program. The kids really like it. We get great parent feedback. We get great student feedback. But we have not discovered a way to measure that yet quantitatively. So we don't give all the kids a test at the beginning of sale and another at the end of sale because the programs are so varied. So we want to look into possibly getting the kids' grades from fourth quarter and then comparing them to the first quarter of the following year or something like that. We haven't figured that out, and that's why it's a definite question. But we want to find a way to measure that, that success because we know we're getting success, but we really need to find a way to be able to demonstrate it.
You've shown us two good metrics to make that.
It's more of the enrichment programs that we haven't figured out yet. You know, the things that we're testing, we can do, but that, that's the key is, we know those enrichment programs are incredibly beneficial, but we just can't measure that yet. So we need to figure out that way.
And then, and then like I said at the last slide, the timing, the four weeks versus the five weeks is really a big question for us. And how to do that to accommodate both our teaching staff and our families. Everyone really likes rocket stuff.
Any questions?
Yeah, just, I'm back to the SAT score. I love, I love to see the improvement. Now, is that sort of just based on, not just, but based on a pre-test and a post-test for those kids that did that? Or is that based on their actual SAT?
They took an SAT test, a full test, the, the second day of the program.
Yeah.
They, you know, was monitored exactly, and then the last, the day before the last, they took again a full test. So these were real tests.
No. So we, I, the two teachers really encouraged the students who were going to be juniors or seniors to take the test as soon as they could when they got back to school, to really try to sign up for that first test. The sophomores will have the opportunity to take the plan and also the PSAT, or, and some of the juniors, the PSAT, so. So, um, you know, hopefully what they learned in the summer will, will have stayed with them in that taking of the test.
Oh, because looking at the website, it's not gonna be offered here.
It is?
Yeah.
Oh, you would know.
So I couldn't buy it on the, on the website.
It's usually a school day. No, I was, was it? You got, no, I don't understand that, but I just could find it online. Okay, yeah, well, it takes a while to come.
I wanted to just tell everybody that also, the first time we've ever done it, we, uh, we had a senior that was two credits short of graduating.
Oh, right.
By just the skin of that student's teeth. And, uh, they came back for credit recovery and graduated at the end of July, I think. And so that's one of our first moves in the right direction about that, about being able to serve a senior in that way is equally as we can serve younger kids. So pretty happy with that. You guys did a great job.
I also wanna mention that, um, we had administrative, um, coverage for the entire course of the, uh, summer program, um, either administrators in the school, but we also had, um, administrators from Mount Abe come and cover on the days that we had vacation days. So, um, with nine, as many as ninety kids, uh, of our own kids and a few Mount Abe kids, plus the Mary Johnson camp here, we could have a hundred and fifty or so students in the building at any one time. So it was important that there was, um, administrators here covering. And it was really nice to know that Andy and, uh, some of his colleagues came over and filled in the days that we needed, so.
And that's one of the other really great things about that partnership is it allows our administrators to also have that, have some time in the summer to, you know, enjoy the summer and not be in the school building as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about the facility. I'll take this opportunity to stand up. I, um, come from a military background, uh, so I was always taught to stand up and speak. And it also gets me out of these really hard chairs. So, um, the, as far as the facilities are concerned, uh, I'd like to start with what's actually going on now. Um, if you haven't heard, we're doing some work on the roof. Anybody, uh, not heard about that? No, okay. We had some, uh, some obstacles in the, in the beginning of the project. Uh, those obstacles were overcome. Uh, and the last meeting that I attended last Tuesday, uh, there were no change orders, there were no changes, there were no, uh, issues. Uh, it was kind of a short meeting. Um, but all the obstacles that we had in the beginning, um, either anticipated or unanticipated were, were taken care of. So the project is on, is on, uh, time right now and it's, uh, a little bit under budget. Um, you can think about that as the, uh, budget is concerned based on what the scope was when we started. So obviously, as projects go through, um, a timeline, the scope may change because things happen. Uh, any of the increase in, in expenditures for any of the, the bad things that happened will not be borne by us, so you should be assured of that. The other things that we've been doing, uh, along with the project and is to make sure that the safety of the, the students in the building were, and the, um, teachers and administrators. Uh, so, uh, we've been taking air quality tests, uh, we've been monitoring, um, the area of the construction. We've made sure that there's pathways in and out of the construction area and that none of the, uh, building, uh, egress, um, methods were compromised. So those types of things, you've seen fences, you've seen signs, you've seen ways that, uh, that the building has changed a little bit, but, uh, we've still been able to, uh, run a school and, uh, and, uh, keep the educational process going. So that's what I have on the roof so far. Any questions about that? Hi, Carol.
I heard that, that this roof, um, was far from the, the last renovation. Is that not correct? You know, we have to get it up. Their roof is nineteen eighty-seven. Nineteen eighty-seven.
If there are no more questions about the roof, uh, I guess we should talk about, um, some of the plans we're making. Some of the plans we're making as late as a half hour before this meeting started, we started talking about, uh, where we're gonna progress over the next two months. And, uh, we do intend to, uh, come back, uh, to, um, everyone with a plan. Uh, and that plan will include, uh, a lot of the, the things that we need to, uh, repair, um, and a lot of the things that we need to, um, change, um, in the short term. So as, as David pointed out earlier, we have a four-point plan and, and part of that plan is, is to start out by, um, unfortunately reacting and repairing, which is not the place you wanna be with a building, but unfortunately, that's where we are. And then, uh, once we get through that R and R or that repair and react, uh, mode, um, hopefully after this, uh, this next step, uh, then we will have a strategic plan and I think David is well aware of that. But that strategic plan has to be generated by the people who are responsible for this building and that, that is, you know, uh, the administration of this building. So, you know, we've tasked them, if you weren't at last week, last month's meeting, we've tasked them with putting together a stra-, strategic plan. I don't wanna get too much into the detail, but, uh, in all the buildings that I've been involved with, and I've been involved in the, um, the building of forty data centers over the past fifteen years, there's always an operation and maintenance manual. It's always put together and it's part of the budgeting process. So that's what we're asking, um, for Bob and, and Ed to put together so that we can make sure that, um, things are looked at, you know, from a systems perspective. So, you know, in a, in a building, you have the, the physical part of the building, you have all of the systems in the building, and then you have an operations and maintenance plan for those, those physical aspects and those, uh, systems. So once you have defined what the, what the operations and maintenance plan should be affecting, the physical structure and the systems in the physical structure, then it's really easy to identify what you have to do going forward. So that's, that's our goal. We don't have it, can't just, uh, I, I forgot my magic wand today, but, uh, you know, you can't just raise a magic wand and say, poof, uh, here's your plan. So, uh, in, in doing that, we've also, if you weren't at last month's meeting, I wanna reiterate, uh, what we talked about, we're, we're also looking at ways to, uh, to enhance, uh, the revenue stream or the cost and price that we would be paying in order to make some of these changes. Uh, they, they have to do with enhancing, uh, the way that we, uh, utilize energy, the way that we, um, maintain the, the facility and, uh, and also look at the way that we utilize natural resources. So one of the things we did talk about today, David, and that's why we all wanted to wait a couple more minutes to answer your first question, is, you know, if, if natural gas is available to us and, uh, the Public Service Board deems it as something that's positive for the area, then it certainly is something that we plan to take advantage of. So, um, those are two big F's, though. And the issue with that is, you know, uh, we need to do this next step now. Uh, so if there's no gas out at the street level and we gotta do something now, um, we're still gonna do something now, but we're not going to preclude, uh, the use of natural gas in our plans. We're not gonna include, uh, some of the things that we might have looked at, um, because of that, that same term, the same two-year term, I think it's about two years, uh, where the gas may or may not be available. So, uh, I also talked about, a little bit about how we're, that, uh, looking at these efficiencies is like getting a second job to, to, to do the repairs on, on your house. So you didn't expect these repairs, you don't have the revenue coming in to do the repairs, so you have to get a second job, uh, to increase the revenue in order to pay for those repairs. And that's where we're gonna look at efficiencies, we're gonna look at ways to, uh, improve the way that we do things and the way that we consume things in order to pay for some of the things that we need to repair. So that means in the next two months, you'll be hearing from us about what we're gonna include, uh, what we think is the next priority. Uh, our first priority was to fix the roof, uh, to, to make the building, uh, secure from above. And, uh, so the next two months, we're gonna talk about what we need to do. We have to move very quickly, so please participate and get anybody else that talks to you about what's gonna happen in the next two months to come and participate. Because we don't wanna end up like we did last year where people came on the day of the warning or the day of the, uh, the informational meeting and ask questions that we had already answered months ago. So make sure they get involved early and ask questions often, um, and we'll do our best to answer those questions as we move through the process. Ask them not to wait to the end, not to wait for the informational meeting, 'cause by that time, we've already done our legal duty by warning and making things leave. So to change at that point is really, uh, very difficult. Um, and at that point, it puts, uh, people who are, uh, in favor and/or opposed to certain things that we've done months ago, uh, you know, very little choice. You either can vote for or against it. So we don't wanna come to the end of the process and have people say, well, I don't know what's going on, so I'm gonna vote against it. And we heard that last time, and we don't wanna hear it again. So we're gonna do our best, you know, this is our charge, we're gonna do our best to answer those questions before we come to the, to the final vote, if you will. Hi.
Are you guys gonna separate input meetings open to the public specifically about the facilities, or is that what you're saying?
Uh, we may have the ability to do that. Um, what we talked about, because the timing is, is so short and because there's really nothing going on in, in elections this year in November, we're not sure of that, but we're gonna confirm that. Um, you know, the traditional voting day is the second Tuesday in November, or the first Tuesday in November, so we may, we may not, um, use that as the day that we go to, to the polls. Uh, so yeah, special meetings are, are something that we thought of, pushing it out a couple of weeks maybe is something, something that we thought about.
Um, yeah, I'm just, last go-around, I personally, and I think our board was a little hesitant to get engaged with some of the social media outlets and, you don't know, but what I'm, what I'm, what I'm telling you is that I'm not gonna shy away from that this go-around. There's a lot of discussion that happens and a lot of people that listen. Uh, I engaged a thread featuring over a hundred people listening, commenting and so forth about the auditorium, and we'll get to the auditorium next. Um, it is a reasonable viable way to try and put a message out there. Now, people can then turn around and comment whatever they want, and that's okay. But, you know, when through some online thread I can address sixty people and we hold a meeting here and half the people in this room show up, you know, so thank you to those that do, you know, it's, um, we, we have to kinda go at all fronts here.
Yeah, I agree.
We really do. And that's why you've seen the in-front port.
They'll probably show up.
Well, we'll see, we'll see. But that's why you've seen a couple pieces of information in front porch, you've seen some stuff in Facebook if you're associated with those, you know, those threads and so forth. So we're gonna do our best to get the word out this time, and like Kurt says, get questions answered sooner. Uh, but there truly are things that must happen, that must happen in this school. You know, there are things that are falling apart and that we're spending far too much money, um, just to run, just because they're so old and inefficient, doesn't make sense.
Closed, it's gonna spark a lot more interest and what happens next. And, and people are gonna have lots of ideas and opinions and...
Sure. Should we go ahead and talk about it? Do you want me to do it?
I just wanted to, to ask Jeff, uh, if there were anything else about what I already spoke about that you'd like to add.
Yeah.
No?
Okay.
There, basically, the, the building committee is, is Neil, Jeff and I and Kathy, uh, comes to those meetings and Ryan came to that meeting today and, uh, Ed and, and Stephanie, um, sorry, I almost said Joanne, I don't know why. Um, but, yeah, law school. But, uh, we try to, we try to get things done so that we can share them, uh, in that committee. Uh, one of the things, things that I'd like to see happen a, a lot more, uh, is, is I'd like to see these meetings be places where we exchange ideas and places where we, um, where we talk a lot about, uh, what's going on. Um, but I would like to see a lot more work happen outside of these, the, the meetings here. And the only way that really you can do that is with committees. Um, so that's why I'm glad there's an audit committee and I'm glad there's a building committee and I have some ideas about other committees that we, that we can have so that when we, then we get here, um, we actually can get some things, uh, done, uh, as opposed to just reacting and, and listening to reports, which are important. But, uh, it feels like sometimes we're just spinning our wheels. Hi.
Hi. You were talking about the systems manual. Is there a financial plan that goes along with that systems manual so that fifteen years or twenty years down the road, the board is not coming back to the taxpayer and saying, oh, the roof is leaking again and we need to, uh, borrow the money to fix the roof?
So you asked me a question, is there a financial plan that goes along with that operations and maintenance plan or manual? Um, if, if it's done correctly, if everything's identified, uh, is, is either a system or a facility, then, uh, that's the, um, that's the way that you create a budget, an operations and maintenance budget. So, um, if it's done correctly, then yes. Uh, because what you have is you have a system, you have a usable life for that system, so you amortize the usable life, life of that system and you create a maintenance, sometimes it's ten, fifteen percent of the actual cost of the system on an annual basis, and that becomes your budget I O. And every year, you put another ten or fifteen percent into that system. And after it's amortized, if it still works, 'cause you've maintained it correctly, that's great because you have zero cost of that system at that point. So you see what I'm saying?
Oh, I understand very well.
Yeah.
I understand very well.
So, you know, perhaps we haven't, what's that?
We've been doing it in Addison for quite some time and I just wanted to make sure that.
I'd love to see this. If you show yours, I'll show you mine. You know, one of the, one of the main, one of the main, anyway, one of the main points of the four-point approach is that we fund operations and maintenance as they should be and based on a deferred maintenance schedule. I mean, we've got a deferred maintenance schedule, then a standard maintenance schedule. We gotta get caught up. Some of this, you know, I know you get it off, but the other piece...
That's why we in Addison are where we are.
Right.
It's because everything broke at once.
And the other thing that we're gonna do is, we're gonna ask the voters to invest a chunk of money into a capital fund every year. That's something that this district hasn't done that all the elementary districts have.
Fantastic.
That's just stuff that we need to go forward and do.
Thank you.
Maybe?
Hi. There's a, there's a reporting law, um, that, you know, stipulates reports, and one of them is, is for the school board to report the condition of the school. And, oh, if you guys would consider that, I think it would be great to start doing that with the next annual report, more specific than, you know...
Yeah, um, that's a great, a great suggestion. I would be, uh, remiss in reporting on a condition that I don't know, don't, at this point. We're still reacting, we're still repairing. Until you get to a proactive environment where you know what you have, you know how you're maintaining it, you know what its value is, then you can tell people what the condition is. So I, I, I have no idea what the condition of this building is. I've, I've heard lots of stuff in, you know, the past, uh, months, six months or so. But it, to me, it's a process. You know, if the process is in place, the, the, the end result is what you expected when you put the process in place. But at the same time, you know, uh, I, everybody should understand that, uh, every time you put something down on paper, it's automatically obsolete. Okay? So please, make sure you understand that, that as long as, as long as, uh, everybody understands that... That as long as everybody understands that something that's written down doesn't mean it's going to be that way forever, or that it's going to always be that way, you know, so once it's, has to be a flexible breathing, you know, living document. And each year, if we follow the same concept, each year, you'll take a look at how you did the last year, so you'll know how you did, you know, getting back to what you were saying. And you'll know, well, you know, we expected to replace all the lights in the gymnasium this year, and we budgeted for it, and we didn't do it. So why didn't we do it? Where did that money go? You know, all those questions can be answered on an annual basis, so you end up with a budget for operations and maintenance that makes sense. So. Any other questions?
Well, we had a question on the table about the auditorium. Do you want me to take a minute and go through that?
Yes, please.
Okay. So yes, the auditorium is close to public use right now. That developed earlier in the summer. I'm going to kind of tell the story forthrightly, so that the voters, the citizens can hear it. One of the first things that the building committee did was to get together and say, "Okay, what can we do in that auditorium facility to get it so that it's in a place that it's a little bit more pleasant for Sue and Karen to do their productions, it's a little bit better for the students to use the facility," you know, in addition to kind of testing the air and knowing that that's okay. And so we asked the administration to go in there and find out what it would take to get those curtains taken down and cleaned, to get the upholstery cleaned, to get the walls cleaned, to do some basic housekeeping in there. And so we got a company to come in and give us an estimate on replacement of certain elements of the curtains, and cleaning and fireproofing of other elements of the curtains, which would bring it up to code, the curtain stuff. When they did that, they said, they gave us a bit, they gave us an estimate, which was much more reasonable than we had expected. And they also included a statement in their letter that said, "We noticed some significant code deficiencies in the rigging. We will do this job, however, we absolve ourselves of liability associated with the rehang of this stuff." So that basically caused us to say, "Okay, how serious is this?" And so as an interim measure, our administration chose to close the auditorium to use while we investigated it. And we got a professional rigging company from Albany, New York. Their job is to do theater. They came in, they went up there, and they produced for us an assessment. I was personally stunned and crestfallen at what I saw in the assessment. It is surprising, I would like to get it on our website, so that the citizens can see what we're talking about.
I have the copy.
Really?
I have the copy.
And being in construction myself, and looking at these inspection reports, the there's definitely things that need to be changed, but I don't see this as, "Oh my God, the sky is falling."
Let me finish again, okay? Please. We also do not think that this means we have to tear the auditorium down and rebuild it, in any way, shape, or form. However, it is unacceptable for there to be rigging hanging by nylon rope in a public facility. I mean, that's just insane.
So the rigging wasn't hanging by the nylon rope? If you read the report, the rigging itself is not hanging by the nylon rope. There is nylon rope that is up there that needs to be changed to a cable forwarding the curtains. I agree. And the hardware that's in there is open-ended, but that could be changed. And some of it that's secured to wood needs to go in those steel structures that is currently there.
So if I could, please finish.
Okay.
All right? There are things in there that, from a non-building perspective, cause me to be extremely concerned that my 17-year-old is up there on a lift messing around with that stuff during production. So I do not disagree that the facility should have been closed. What we're doing, we have a meeting next week between our structural engineers and the rigging folks to determine, okay, what can our structure hold? We're going to take everything down. That's something we've committed to do, we have to figure out how to pay for it, but it has to come down. The lights on the side, I think you'll agree, it sounds like you're informed, have to come down before they fall in and land on people, right? So once we get all that stuff taken out, then we can be in a position to begin to use that facility again. We can be in a position to figure out, okay, what can we hang up there? What is the minimum that we can hang up there that would allow us to do production, including rental lights and things that we might bring in, free-standing stuff, so that we can put the auditorium back online? Whether or not we get there for production time this year, I don't know. But we're committed to dealing with it, because we can't have a half a high school, and that's part of our high school. Sounds like you have some background in this, so-
No, certainly, and I'm hoping that- You are consulting a structural engineer, because that was my fear. I mean, anybody that doesn't understand how to read an inspection report, doesn't understand construction, I can understand why somebody would take this and go, "Wow, you know, this is really bad." It's really not that bad. We're not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix the auditorium. You know, some of this can be fixed relatively inexpensively, and the show could go on. And my concern is, a structural engineer should have been brought in after this. This is like taking your car to a dealer to have something repaired, and then saying, "Oh, well, you know, I think you're just better off to buy a new car, there's so much wrong with it." I kind of look at it like this, that's what these people do.
Why do you hear us saying we're buying a new car, though? I mean, we have the structural engineer coming in next week.
Absolutely, no, you do. That's the first I've heard of that, right? It's the structural engineer.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, that meeting was established three days ago.
No, and that's great, that's great, that's fantastic. But all I'm saying is, the inspection report is done by somebody who sells this equipment, right? I mean, it's not done by the fire marshal, it's not done by somebody with some authority to actually close the auditorium. And that's what I'm saying, right?
And you're absolutely right.
So, and I think it's a shame. I think all of these kids that are seniors, that aren't going to be able to perform on that stage this year in their senior year, it's a shame. And I just feel like it was closed without really understanding what was wrong. And maybe they should have taken a little, they should have taken a little closer look at it.
Well-
With somebody who understood, you know, what was happening with the inspection report.
You know, one of the things that's in the mind of the administration, and I can speak to it if you want, obviously, it's their place to, is we have to be thinking of the public safety of our kids and our constituents. And I agree with you, and everyone who has looked at that report says, "It's not that bad, but it's got to come down before we can do, you know, before we can do anything." You've got to agree with that in the best way you can.
No, not necessarily, I don't agree, because I think some of the attachments that they speak of, I mean, there is structural steel there that they could be attached to. So, no, I don't, definitely, I don't agree that it just needs to come down, no, I don't. Because it's hard, you're talking hardware, you're not talking, you know, the rail itself isn't falling apart, or something of that sort. But now I know where you're going, and that's what I was after.
Well, I, two weeks ago, we were talking about this and pushing very hard to get that assessment done as fast as possible, because, I mean, my kids see you.
Well, and mine's not, thank God, so hopefully, mine will have a chance to be on that stage next year. But I feel really bad for the kids that are, that aren't going to have that opportunity in their senior year.
I guess my concern is, last March, in a special meeting, Sue Daniel, she was here, she voiced her concern, and it seems like she wasn't listening, but that was in March, so if all of this would have transpired, or, you know, I don't know, I don't know why the school board, or even why Sue felt that it was going to be dangerous. I remember her exact words, but-
Her concerns were with the curtains. Were really, one of her driving concerns were with the curtains. I remember this very specifically.
Right, and the screen, too. She mentioned that screen multiple times.
The screen, right. And so, again, we began to meet in June. Okay, we're not going to be able to rebuild this auditorium, so what can we do? And frankly, I feel like, within the constraints of our public service, this board has been pretty responsive to trying to make things happen.
Actually, I want to applaud that, we've done a lot more. So Sue came and expressed her concerns. The first thing I did, having joined the board, was read all the reports that had been done as part of the school improvement project. There was a report by a licensed electrical engineer that specifically addressed that there were no flagrant code violations, electrical code violations in the auditorium. That was one specific thing. The other concern that was mentioned was with regard to air quality. So we had the Department of Health come in to do an inspection and air monitoring, test it. As a result of that inspection, there was a report. That report listed suggested cleaning to be done in the auditorium. And anybody who's come to these meetings knows that ever since I got a copy of that March letter from the Department of Health, I've been asking what the plan is to clean. And so where we are today, frankly, is a direct line from that point. Because as soon as we got into cleaning, taking curtains down, the issue with the rigging came up. And I agree with you, I think it's all about the hardware and the attachment, I don't think we have a huge structural problem. The timing is unfortunate. If we had gotten all this done earlier, would have been much more preferable. But I for one am very clear that we're taking a logical and prudent course every step of the way. We're not making individual opinions, we're basing the actions on the opinions of licensed professionals, so that we can assure the public and the people who use that auditorium on a daily basis, that they're safe. That's our responsibility. I wish it were happening faster, but I think we're going about it in the right way at this point. So it's going to be clean, it's going to be safe.
Too late for this year, it's not going to be about that.
Well, you know, we'll find out, we'll find out. Let's let the struc-
It's too late, it's not too late.
To do a production, but it's not too late to use that facility necessarily.
No, I'm not-
I'm too, my glass is way too half-full on this, I'm sure. But I live the opinion that, you know, if we can move quickly, once we find out the answers to the structural things that we're talking about, you know, maybe we can get some free-standing rigging on the sides of that stage, or maybe we can get the kids in there to do the production that Sue and Karen are talking about doing. You know, so maybe it doesn't have to be in the gym, we'll see. But we, as Jeff said, it's a logical progression, there's only so much we can do in the context of running a whole educational program, so.
Yes, and maybe that's why the committee's come in, you know, like Kurt's saying, you know, certainly, because I mean, I know, we work under pretty tight constraints, we work with Memorial College, we work at U of M, you know, we've worked in a lot of different areas, and, I mean, schools are definitely one of those areas that you've got that limited window, and you can get a lot done if you really put your mind to it. But it would take a committee, like you said, to be able to do that.
It would help me-
And money, yeah.
True. It would help me to know, you seem to have a specific background in this. I don't know you still, but you-
No, my name is Karen Myers, and we own commercial construction at that branch.
Oh, okay.
Can I ask a question?
You can, and then we should move forward, so that these people can get their thoughts as well.
The dilemma that I'm experiencing is with the Carisberg Children's Theater, which we've used the Virgen stage for the last eight years for productions, and we're in the planning stages, and I need to make a decision soon about our March production.
Sure.
So, I'm, I know-
Lighting the union, by March, we could be having-
We paid for lighting last year, we actually had the same folks that Sue uses come in and hang lights, which doesn't sound like that's going to be a possibility, but I guess I'm just trying to, at this stage of the game, should I plan on something else?
That's not hard.
No, I know, but-
I don't know.
No, I'm not asking you for an answer, but I'm asking you for maybe an opinion on, you know, do you think that this auditorium will be open and usable by the end of the year?
The kids are going to need someplace to play music, you know. Do you guys have a beat on that yet? I mean, we have our structural and industrial meeting next week, so.
We're in the middle of the race.
I mean, you're going to be able to hang some stuff up there.
I'm sorry.
Certainly the intent.
Right, I-
That space is used as soon as possible.
Rigging's going to be demolished this kind of week.
And there will be no curtains, true, right?
This week, this week it's kind of red out of the-
So the rigging's going to be demolished this week, it's going to be, everything's
on the ground, we're going to save what we can save, which is a couple of runners.
Yeah.
They're going to package up the curtains that they were originally going to take and repair and fireproof, and they're going to put them in airtight bags at the rear of the stage. They're going to take the curtains that are not worthy of keeping, put them in airtight bags on the side of the stage. They're going to get rid of the stuff that's just not tenable, keep the stuff that is tenable, there's going to be some lighting left, there'll be nothing to hang it from. And at that point, once we get the front lights that hang over the audience that were deemed unsafe out of there, and all that stuff demolished, pretty much what we're looking at is we'll be able to use it as an auditorium. Then the problem solving's going to be exactly as Neil is suggesting. Can we rig some kind of lighting, some kind of decor that would allow some activity in the wings, allow the audience to concentrate on the performance on the proscenium, all right, and go from there? That's all going to be, you know, guesswork and creativity and kind of everybody pitching in. So we may be able to use the auditorium as an auditorium within just a few weeks, but whether or not you could do a play on it, I can't speak to that yet, yeah.
And there's one step that, you know, we also have to plug in there that we probably thought we could do before the school year opened, but now we don't have the time to do it, and that's clean. So we can't clean until after the roof is demolished.
Right, and that was a choice we had to make.
We do have a cleaning contract that we put off until after the roof demolition. And also, we have a contract to clean the high area at the rigging level, which is also by Reynolds Draper Service, they're willing to go up there on a lift and clean all that stuff for us, we're going to clean all the upholstery and carapits in there after the roof demolition. So, I mean, it's a total of 20, over $20,000 of unbudgeted monies that are going to go in just to get this auditorium to the point where it's usable as an auditorium. And at that point, the board's going to have to give us some progress.
And what I want to emphasize is, that's progress. Because when we were sitting here in March, everybody had their own opinion and concerns, and is it safe or isn't? And now we're establishing fact, we're using licensed professionals, we've got a plan, and it's going to be safe and clean. So it doesn't feel like it right now, but this is progress as compared to where we were.
So no matter what, you'll spend that-
You're asking, Mr. Huns-
Oh, sorry. Sorry, so. So you're going to demolish up the roof, and then there's going to be cleaning, like when you said cleaning, like the dust, the walls, the upholstery, the rugs?
Yeah.
And then perhaps it could be open for, like, classes during the day?
It's going to come open for classes during the day as soon as possible. Yeah. All right, it's going to be up-
Well, it's going to be up, see, one of the things that we have been, I don't think we're misled, we misunderstood, there's a difference, is that it's not just the demolition of the roof and then re-roofing it. They re-roof, they demolish and re-roof at the same time. So it's not as simple as we thought. We thought, well, heck, once they get all the roofing off, and they'll put the membrane on, we're ready to go, that's not how it goes. So we're, we've really got to wait until the roof is on before we can clean, because we don't know how much particulate is going to come out of that.
That said, the side lights are down next week.
Right.
What I heard you say, which means classes can go in there after the side lights are down. And then people leave the stage after the rigs are down.
Well, the classes are on stage.
Yeah, so they won't be able to do anything till-
With the rigging to cut out.
Once the rigging's down.
Okay, thank you.
Progress.
Okay, just-
Okay, we do need to move forward, but go ahead, last, last point.
Spend that $20,000 in lieu of a future bond. No matter what, you'll be spending that money to clean-
This is cleaning.
This is cleaning finance for 20 years.
No, I got it, I just want to clarify.
We've already budgeted, or we've already encumbered that money.
And we are being mindful of what are the things that need to go in there that allow this to be an entire whole high school? And if there is money that needs to be packaged into the coming bond that we ask for, that puts things back at least to where they are so we can do productions, I think that will probably be asked for from the boards. Because we can't have, what's the point of having an auditorium if you can't just-
I think you should ask for what you originally asked for personally, but that's my opinion.
Is this on this topic, Mr. Huns?
It is, just a comment, the board was accused of ignoring the request.
It is. Just a comment. The board was accused of ignoring the request for the auditorium. But it's quite obvious to me that the impetus for all of this was because of the request of the music teacher to investigate the auditorium. And I would like to point out that the accusation is completely unfounded, that the board acted very responsibly and, and responded very well to the request of the music teacher. And did not ignore the request of the music teacher.
So thirty-three.
Yes. Okay, um, we're gonna, I'm sorry, Karen, we're gonna move on.
Thank you.
And it doesn't matter who raises their hand, we gotta move on. Okay, we have no student reps, so, uh, oh, board communications, actually. Anything?
Nothing else.
No, I have, I have one. I received an email from a woman representing V S B A announcing an Education and Healthcare Systems in Transition Regional Meeting for Addison County School Board Members at Mount Ave on September thirtieth. If you are interested, let me know and I will send you the email. This came to me in lieu of Dawn.
Uh, that's the same meeting that's gonna be held regionally?
Yeah.
So it's, yeah. If you're a member of the V S B A, you should have.
Right, I'm just, it was sent to me and I was asked to.
No, I'm just making.
Or to not, so I didn't. Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Okay, Tommy Lee is not here.
I, I think I'd like to go first because I think I'd like to offer up Christine Krikoli, who wanted to do a, a short reminder of our progress on performance-based graduation requirements. And I thought it would be a nice idea to swing back into showing what we're doing for, uh, our children. And, uh, so Christine?
So this is in lieu of the principal's report?
Not in lieu.
In addition. Thank you for the additions.
It's part of.
Um, yeah, I was, I'm sort of part of, I'm folded into the, um, presentation. So, I actually just came along to give a bit of a progress report rather than lots of bells and whistles. Um, my hope is to perhaps get on the agenda for the October meeting to do a, a bigger, a bigger show, invite more people who are working with me. But I wanted to, to make sure you didn't forget the PBGRs, the Performance-Based Graduation Requirements, are still chugging along in their quiet and sometimes not so quiet way. Um, so I just, some bullet points, um, for you. We have, um, an e-portfolio, and I think Joe and, um, Be- uh, Joe and Beth referenced it in their, their sale, their summer school report. We have an e-portfolio site up, um, and, and working for the twenty-sixteens and twenty-seventeens. We've had the, uh, beta group last spring of, um, twenty-sixteens from all ranges of the spectrum come in and test out, what is it like? What does it feel like to have basically an academic Facebook? The kids are starting to call it their face portfolio, because it's their e-portfolio, but it's also their, it's about them and their learning. Um, so I kinda like that. It seemed to make them perk up and be a little more interested in that. Um, she, they've already reported about the summer school. And I like that, that twenty-sixteens and twenty-seventeens both were involved in the summer school. So we are, at, at the twenty-seventeens, the, the first years, our freshmen, whatever one likes to call them these days, will have a sampling, a small one, of students who, oh yeah, I did that last summer. Let me show you how easy it is. So already, the fact that we're, we're gonna get kids able to teach other kids about what's going on with their portfolios and how to deal with it and have fun with their learning, um, is exciting to me. Wednesdays, the professional development calendar, uh, alternate Wednesdays, I believe it's every other Wednesday. And we have teams of the entire faculty, teachers and paraprofessionals and social educators and people we just drag in sometimes out of the hallway, are working, um, we are currently, our job are developing and refining, refining the rubrics that we are using to help score and look at the work. We're also working on systems of assessment. Um, some of the assessment will be done by the individual classroom teacher. Other portions of the assessment will be by teams, looking at the larger picture and, and perhaps the different sections of the portfolio and the learning. Um, I wanna point you to, the PBGR now has a presence on the V U H S website. So definitely clicking around in there. There are some things that need maybe tightening or tightening, um, but there's a lot of great information available for people to, the performance-based graduation requirements themselves are listed there with a, something of a description. Um, personal learning project that we're hoping to launch, um, later this month with the twenty-sixteens and twenty-seventeens, which will be a year-long project, getting them to delve into a passion and teaching them that school and home both provide learning. And so that will be something that will be working with the students. There's a description there and there's a lovely actual flyer, um, multicolored flyer there that you can read the details about. Um, the graduation expectations for twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, exactly what number and how many, et cetera, are also on that website. We also provided some links, um, and some other pieces or places to look about personalized learning. Um, the Vermont Agency of Education, the Educational Quality Standards Recommendations. And then, um, pointed people towards a few of the schools that are currently using performance-based graduation requirements in some way, shape, or form. One of the biggest differences, differences about the U H S and some of these other schools is that as a public high school, what we're trying to do with every student, many of the schools are trying to do with a small sector of their students. So it's, it's different, but similar. So there are other places to look at this. Um, notes for the future. As I said at the start, we are hoping to be here in October to do a little bit larger presentation and, and talk a little bit more about what we see down the line. Uh, we are currently working on a course proposal, which we'd like to bring before the board, uh, in October to, to create basically a PBGR course, which will provide support for students as they go through the portfolio process. Um, our vision right now, again, will be tightened up in a, in a more described form in October, um, would be that it's, it's a course that would be facilitated by multiple teachers reaching across the schedule so that we do hit as many kids as possible. It's because this is about all learners, not just targeting specific learners. Um, and the other thing that we are exploring and looking at as, as the, as the committee or group is, um, how different schools support the PBGR implementation and how to maintain and sustain that. Um, of the schools that we've looked at so far, each has found the need to have some form of a PBGR facilitator. Um, so we've been looking at the different places. And again, many of those websites or schools are in the PBGR website that's within the V U H S website. I tried to talk really fast, I'm sorry, but it has been a long time for you and I didn't wanna take up too much of your time. Is that too fast? Should I go back on anything? It is cool. It's so exciting.
Because we know we're gonna hear from you next one.
Yes, so we'll have actual visuals. But I just wanted to remind you that we're still working hard and working broad. It's now lots of people involved. Are there questions, comments, concerns, or confusion on the people who are now working with us? Absolutely. And we try to answer them, and when we don't know the answer, we try to find out. But it's been exciting to have people work together as the teams and the expert groups and, and be able to raise questions that we thought we had considered or look at it with a different view. It's one of those things, when you take your work and you present, and you, I think, are bumping up against this within other facets of school life, but you think it makes sense and you present it to other people and they say, I don't understand how you got to, so that's what we're doing now. But in a very collegial way, I think, throughout, across the meetings, so. Phew, I didn't wanna take up your time, but I hope to see you next week.
Thank you, Helen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, uh, so we really are doing things for our students here. It's hard to tell sometimes in between, uh, rainstorms. Um, I, I would like to point out that the work that, that the PBGR group is doing and all the teachers that are involved with the PBGR, which is everybody, um, is exactly the work that the new legislation is calling for in the multiple pathways. It, in fact, it informed that legislation. And, uh, we are so, I'm so, I can't say proud because they should be proud of themselves, but I'm so pleased that we've been able to get out in, in front of this thing, of personalized education, about really getting to know our kids, having good pro-social programming, morning meeting, callback, uh, and soon to come, P L Ps, which we've all gotta really train for, personalized learning plans for every kid. And, you know, we are so far out ahead of the wave that we're really positioned well. And, uh, but it's because of the hard work that the teachers have done. And, uh, one of the things that's really, it seems to be going well and we're really starting to be attracted by it is a new, uh, sense of being a seven through twelve school instead of two schools. And we understand very well how the middle school is feeding us. And they fed us a lot better than ever last year with, with the, uh, with their eighth grade projects and, uh, and sort of laying the ground, the groundwork for our success. And they've also done that with the parent, uh, the parent, uh, student-led conferencing with the parents. And we, we're just really tickled and, and, uh, Steph's been a real help and a real professional helping us get that, uh, up and going, seven through twelve. One of the things I'd like to mention is not so much academic, uh, but, uh, when the roof came off and we locked, depending how you look at it, we had four or five classrooms in distress. Um, you know, our night janitors went up there and pitched in and if it hadn't been for them, we would have had a lot worse damage. They, they second, they worked overtime, but they also were, they didn't have to do that. And, uh, and I'd also like to talk about the teachers. We, we got up there, we didn't have a roof, we're, no, all the air handlers are on the ground. So there's no air moving unless you have a box fan up there. Uh, for the better part of a week, we had eight to twelve dehumidifiers going around the clock. We had about twenty blowers with the tubes, you know, you see them at used car dealerships. Except I didn't know they had a structural, uh, application. They were taped up into the superstructure, blowing everything out. At the end of a week, we had, we're back down to eleven percent humidity. Our air testing was good. The, uh, the mold spore count was, was lower than it is outside. But those teachers, when we'd walk into their classrooms in the morning, they'd be a hundred and ninety degrees in there. And we'd open the windows and blow, and blow the fans, and by about ten o'clock, it became a little bit livable.
Eighty-seven or so.
Eighty-seven or so. Those teachers did a miraculous job hanging in there, educating the kids, thinking through problems, moving the kids to cooler areas. And, uh, you know, it was just amazing to watch, not, not really one complaint. And I just, it's really amazing what a group of professionals we have. So, and, at that.
And, and it was the start of school, so there, you know, there's that, there's that tension of doing that, yeah.
It's always hot.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we sincerely appreciate those, those efforts. Thank you.
Really remarkable.
For the staff is aware of that, in, in, including janitorial staff. Uh, as we knew, we didn't make it easy. Uh, and it sounds like people are really rising to the occasion, so, thank you.
It's just one of those things. I'm done. You're up.
Um, yeah, well, I, last time we were together, I reported on all the inserts events and the days that, uh, we had planned. And since I saw you, we've done, um, a middle school, uh, pro-deb retreat day. We did a leadership retreat day. We did four days of in-service. We had a seventh grade welcome back event, uh, first time in a couple of years. We've sort of, um, revived that. Um, we've had eight days of school and a number of faculty-type meetings, school leadership meetings. And, um, we're, we've got our, you know, we're, we're underway. It feels really good to be on this side of the start of school, especially as a new administrator. But, um, we, we've talked about the PBGRs and Caststone Project and the work at the middle school is, is Caststone Year Two, uh, you know, learning, looking at what, what it was last year, how it looked and how we can make it better. And we really have to build capacity in our students from the minute they walk into the building. A seventh grader is for being successful in, in that sort of benchmark process. Um, it, it is designed to build skills in students to be successful at the high school level. And while we're not using, well, we haven't been, or they hadn't been using the PBGR language specifically, we're doing that crosswalk, crosswalk now at the middle school also and, and more, uh, intentionally, uh, looking at that. They are the same skills, it's just we haven't been, they hadn't been referred to them in that way. So taking a look at that, um, because, you know, then we have six years to build capacity as opposed to two years for one project and four years for another project. So, um, and it, it's, it will feed down to the elementary schools. I mean, how can they, we're talking about, uh, K through twelve curriculum alignment. That was the admin work that we've been doing. Uh, we're looking at seven, twelve department work and curriculum alignment, but it's really a seven through twelve conversation, so. Um, that's, that's what we're starting to talk about at, at the middle level in those faculty meetings and in the larger group of, of seven, twelve faculty meetings and the different configurations of leadership groupings that we, we meet in and, um, how, how we use our professional development on collaborative.
I'd like to point out, we also, uh,
Yeah, what's this?
This is a weekly schedule of things that we're doing. And except that I got tired and, and got the wrong football game on the last. Uh, it's not against Smalling, yeah, I, I flagged. Uh, but this is, uh, what's out every Monday. Weekly memo. And if you have any questions about his content, it's a great opportunity to circle it in red and bring it back to the next board meeting he asked us about.
Suggestion for, for inspiring quote or?
Just because sometimes I put the emphasis on the oxalates. How, how do you use that first word?
Definiteness, de- def- de- de- definiteness of purpose.
Definitely.
Definiteness. Back to school night, right? Did you say?
Thank you. Okay. Superintendent's report, I came prepared in, uh, in Tom's stead to help with the board reorganization, but it's not to be tonight as, as I gather. Uh, I do not have a report from the superintendent to convey, but I will say that I have found doing this work so far to be really interesting and, uh, and energizing.
I'll ask a question then, if I may. Um, do you two have a kind of a divvy of programmatic areas that you're beginning to implement or not quite yet?
I think we're gonna go into that in some detail at the SU meeting. But I will say that, uh, all the responsible, all the, uh, areas that Tom oversees, I certainly expected to be involved in. But in matters of contracts and things more legal, uh, he certainly is the person who is doing all of that at this point. So with that, I, I have no further report from the superintendent.
Kathy?
So a few things tonight. Um, the first thing up is, um, just a recap of the food service, um, results from the last school year. And I know we'd just like to do this quickly, um, in September. So, um, beginning in two thousand ten, FY two thousand ten, we switched to cafe services from another contracted food service group. And, um, you know, we weren't keeping an eye on the prior contractor and we did incur some substantial losses. So going forward, I'm just keeping this spreadsheet and just adding the, um, you know, the results of operations every year so that we do have a way to track their performance.
So if I'm reading this correctly, in the column that says two thousand ten, you'd add together revenues and subsidies and then subtract the cost of the contracted services?
So then subtract the cost, right?
And, and this, this is a, a net, so this is?
That's a net, yeah, yeah, actually, there's no, there's no description there.
Okay, so this is, this is showing that since two thousand ten, there's been a positive balance.
It's not a small, yes, we're, you know, pretty much a break even.
Where is the surplus, Karen?
It goes to offset those years of loss. So it'll be a while before we, um, can truly offset all of that.
I know I've asked this before, but where does that money live? That deficit live? I know I've asked this before, but where does that money live? That deficit live?
Well, the, the um, cash deficit lives as a loan from the general fund. So um, so looking at two thousand, uh, let's say two thousand eight, the deficit of five thousand one oh five. I mean, the cash to pay that came out of the general fund.
Right.
Even though the deficit lives in the, the food service fund.
So is the amount in the whole, the sum of all of these parentheses numbers? Minus all of the positive numbers?
It's about sixty-one thousand.
Yes.
So there, there remains a real deficit somewhere in the food service fund, but sixty-one thousand dollars that has been covered by annual?
I mean, and this is just ten years of activity, you know, so, I mean, there's really about, um, let's see here, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of loss in the food service fund.
Where's that number?
And um. Um, you don't have it, it's, it's in this report, we'll go over in a minute. But I was just a little alarmed when I saw the decrease in the revenues between um, FY twelve and FY thirteen. It, it's down by almost eight percent. You know, we did have, we were mandated to introduce a new um, meal pattern this year, um, for FY thirteen. And going forward, we, you know, still have ongoing changes that are required by the USDA. So it was just a little alarming to me to see the, the decline in the, the revenues and, you know, and the subsidy. The, the revenue part is um, that the paid portion that the students paid. And then the subsidy would be the breakfast subsidy and lunch subsidy.
Does it have any relationship to enrollment? I mean, are those owners of women get it?
Some, I would have to um, you know, I need to take a look at the number of meals served.
How are we gonna be impacted by the fact that all lunches and breakfasts are free? What's, what's that gonna do to us?
There's no longer reduced.
There's no longer reduced.
Right. Right, not everything.
Reduced is gonna?
It's not the same when the, the breakfast rate quote reduced, that is not, that is free.
That's free.
I mean, the state pays that. So there's a federal subsidy for the reduced, and then the state pays the balance. And so there's the same that happened with lunches.
So what, what, I, just to make, make it clear, when the kids used to pay a reduced rate, where did that money go? Did it go into our cafeteria services?
It went here into the, the food service revenue.
Right, and so the state's going to uh?
Kick in?
Kick in that amount?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Did not know.
Yeah, the school will be cool. The school's not picking up the burden for that difference.
Thanks.
I don't think so. Unless anybody has any questions, this summary is, was provided to us from um, Cafe Services. So they receive an admin, they receive sixteen thousand dollars, and that fee really hasn't changed. That's their fee for um, you know, for the contract. Um, and then they do pay us this, they call it here a parent-school coordinator, this eighty-two hundred dollars. They, you know, they pay that to us and we hire a line-up quote that, with that. And just some history, Jeff, I mean, when we went out to bid before, this was kind of a deal breaker that made us award that contract to um, to Cafe Services.
Five thousand dollars unpaid, something to attach.
Um, so that was as of June, um, so we, um, those are no longer unpaid. You know, their functions and they give the bill to the teacher and, um, you know, they just didn't make it through to the office.
Oh, so their invoices are yet covered?
Right, so they're, they're covered as of now.
Yes, yes, thank you. There's always a line between returning the bill and paying that bill. Oh, really?
So this is sort of the first glance at um, how we ended the year, June third, eighth, two thousand thirteen. These are the numbers that I have reported to the state. Probably just a little bit more work needs to be done before um, the audit begins. Which I hope will be soon. So just looking at the schedule here, um, revenues actual, nine point five million dollars. We budgeted nine million dollars, um, for a difference of five hundred and six thousand dollars. Um, mo- mostly in the area of special ed, we'll take a look at that in a minute. And expenditures, um, we actual were uh, ten million, five fifty, budgeted nine point seven million. Um, for a difference of eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Our deficit, um, a million, thirty-four thousand. We had budgeted a deficit of um, almost seven hundred thousand dollars from a prior year surplus that was carried forward. So we were over budget on the deficit by about three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars.
So that was, you said there was a, the difference in the revenues is special education reimbursement? So was there special education costs in excess of our reimbursements?
Yes, yes, as usual. Um, that's not the only area um, in the financials that um, contributed to the deficit. No, it's one of the areas. So just turning the page, looking at the balance sheet there on page one, and these are our revenues. And if we just, we come down the page, um, just looking at the special ed expenditures reimbursement. We had budgeted seven hundred and fifty thousand, we received nine hundred and one thousand. Extraordinary reimbursement, we had budgeted a hundred thousand and we received two ninety-two. So our total special ed reimburse, those two items plus our mainstream block grant, is that's one point four million dollars that we received back in for special ed expenditures.
Where's the mainstream block grant?
Um, so that is two hundred and seven, two oh five.
Oh, there it is, okay.
But there's no variance.
There's no variance, that's just an amount the state tells us that we're going to receive and um. Um, let's see, some other areas, the sale of assets, the last item, that was the sale of the school buses for sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, everything else, let's see, we had a little bit of tuition, ten thousand dollars that came in. Interest income under budget, uh, you know, takes a while for that um, budgeted item to get recalibrated. Athletic receipts were over budget. The state support to the tech center there in the middle for three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. We received that money um, every year, but we're not allowed to budget for it. So oftentimes, the, we have a surplus because of that item.
But it's a paper surplus.
It's a paper surplus, but um.
Because we actually do spend that money on techs.
This is the state, that's the state match for the tech center. That we actually, comes out of the ed fund, so we do raise taxes for it, but the way that the budgets are presented, it's, it's a little confusing, but I don't know. But we're not, I'm, so there's no budgeted number there for that. And then you'll just notice the state ed funds, we have a budget of seven point seven million dollars. But we break that down between the one point nine that we get from the state and then up above, local assessments of five point five, that's what we're seeing in taxes. So the one point nine is the amount the state makes up. And varying amounts in different towns. If you look down at the bottom of the page is the food service. And the fourth item down is retained earnings at a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So that's our true loss, right there. Hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Being carried forward.
Being carried forward since the beginning of time, you know, of the, of the school.
But that's the most stuff, right?
Well, that's gonna be offset by another, you know, twelve hundred dollars. So I'm gonna reduce that by uh?
Oh, I said since the beginning of time, not since two thousand three.
No, since the beginning of time. I mean, I locked off a few years on this spreadsheet, you know, just because it's just kinda, it just.
In effect, we're borrowing from ourselves, the financial deficit that? That's uh, pretty interesting.
I ask about this every year.
And I mean, the elementary schools subsidize, you know, sometimes the, the general fund will put a money at the food service uh, fund to help with deficit. All right, so just um, turn a few pages, so that balance sheet has four pages. I just wanna get right to the expenses. Um, it's called budget to actual at the top. Um, and just, I'm just gonna point out some of our larger items that are contributing to the deficit. Right there in the middle of the page is tuition reimbursement. Budgeted fifty thousand, we actually spent eighty-one thousand. You know, that's one of the items that's traditionally hard to determine who's going to, you know, um, take the school up on its offer for um, tuition reimbursement. The next section agriculture, you'll notice the Hannaford contract there in the middle. We pay Hannaford for a contract. Um, we've always separated out, Tom has always separated out the various components of that contract, salary and benefits. But you know, that item, that um, grouping for agriculture actually is, came in right on budget.
So forty-seven-five, sixteen-six, thirty-six-hundred, two hundred bucks, a hundred bucks, you summed that up, that's where you get your sixty-nine, six-eighty-four?
You know, about.
Okay.
No. Yeah, they, they bill us a, a set amount. Their salary scales different than ours, their benefits are different than ours. So just in the various departments, some, you know, some departments are right on, over a little, under a little.
We have some planning room support that we had budgeted for?
Some, some s- um, salary change there. Page five. Um, middle school, which is on page um, page six, paying in under budget by thirty-one thousand dollars. And then also on page six, we have special education, which um, was over budget by six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Well, I think that has to do with, we made a salary change, and I believe the salary was supposed to be half planning room and half guidance? Question mark, no?
Part special education, part planning.
Well, anyway, um, I don't think that, that person's, that person's salary did not go up to special ed. And we did not submit for it, and their time study did not, um, anyway, um. I can look into that?
Yeah, thanks, I, that's very confusing to me to look at.
So looking at special ed, of the two point eight four million dollars of expenses, so we received back a million four from the state. So that left eight hundred thousand dollars that um, was out as, as ours, I guess you'd say. And of course, the big item there is tuition.
Right, so that's tuition for out-of-district placement?
Out-of-district placement, huh?
That's just a killing. Now, we budgeted for this in the current year, remember, we saw this, these were the numbers that drove us to move our special ed budget up this year. So hopefully that won't happen this year.
So we'll see, you know, kids move out of the district, other students move into the district, so we'll just have to see what happens.
But there's individuals associated, we're not gonna talk about who, it doesn't matter, but there's individuals associated with these numbers and we know where they are in our system, so.
Yes, yes. And, you know, we are under some scrutiny from the state agency of education on the high cost of special education here at this school. So I would um, not be surprised if they wanted to take a closer look. We are a high, what's, there is a term called high spending school, and we are a high spending school.
On specialty.
So we need to submit additional documentation to the state.
And those out-of-district placements are pursuant to a plan that's, and those plans are updated annually?
Yes, yes.
And when, are, are all the plans done at the same time, or is this like a rolling?
It's just, you know, it's rolling, yeah, staggered.
So it's hard to get your hands around what the impact of this is gonna be at any one given point in time?
Another thing that shifts a lot is if the kid's in and out of state's custody, DCF custody. I mean, if he's in the DCF custody, we really don't have much financial obligation for out-of-district placement. But if he comes home, all of a sudden, we've got the hundred and sixteen thousand, and we've got the eighty-nine thousand uh, into our budget. So, I mean, it, a lot of that has happened over the last couple of years, passing in and out of state custody, back to parental custody in our district. So that's a, that's another thing that confines our planning.
So another area, speech pathology, on page eight, um, over budget by about twenty thousand dollars. You know, um, we had a contracted provider. This year, we have um, an employee, so we're hoping we can save some money in that area.
I'm over in transportation.
Before we get there, can we, can we just look at operations and maintenance on page ten? Um, that area is over budget by ninety-five thousand dollars. So, you know, building repair, technical services, um, and fuel oil would be the three large contributors to that.
What would technical services be?
So we did some controls upgrade, software upgrade, over the, over the year. And fuel oil, it could have just been the um, the timing of deliveries. And all the other schools were under budget in fuel oil. So transportation, you need to take a look at the two categories together. So uh, twenty-seven-eleven student transportation, and then combine that with extracurricular, because it has not been separated out.
Right, so it's still, if I'm reading the numbers right, it looks like we're about thirty-five thousand over our budget. And our budget was based on the change over to the contract.
Mm-hmm. And there was also, there was, uh, we needed to buy all new buses at that point in time, or we only had one or one bus perhaps that was worth keeping. So, you know, as part of our decision to go with, to go with that different contract versus to retain our own transportation in-house. Was that we were going to have to have a plan to purchase two or three buses.
Understood, and that's, that's fine, but we contracted at a certain con, you know, in a certain contract with the presumption that we'd be saving money in the transportation budget, notwithstanding having to buy new buses. So it didn't happen.
So I need, there is an analysis in the works that I need to complete that um, compares the type of, the type of transportation. So ex- pulling out extracurricular, pulling out field trips, you know, pulling out um, all the various components and see where um, projections um, are not accurate.
So, eleven thousand four hundred and twenty-six percent in contracted services. We're in page ten.
So the two hundred and thirty thousand?
Yeah.
So that was...
We budgeted two thousand.
On the prior year, um...
Yeah, that was a switch from the contract.
Pay salaries and all of that.
So it all kinda, all this stuff up here balances out.
Probably still thirty-five thousand.
Right, that's what I was, I, you know, 'cause we, I thought the contract was gonna save us some money.
Was going to save us some money.
And that was based on, so the contracted amount that we put out there was based on the budget that we moved last year, which was a smaller number than what was in the budget the year before. This is the year of the transition, so...
This is the year of the transition, so I need to take a look at, um, the various components of the contract.
Wasn't that the big debate about that contract?
It was.
I was gonna say, this is a ton of money, and Kathy would show up and say, no, it's not, and this is...
Yeah, was the debate.
Right. So I need to separate out the home to school, the field trips, Hanaford, 'cause there was a price for every component.
Do you know that stuff still happened prior to the switch? I mean, we were still paying for all those services.
We were, we were. Are there any questions?
And a hundred thirteen thousand dollars in design and engineering.
For the year, yes. And that's just, you know, beginning July one of twelve, so we actually had expenses before that period of time.
Right.
And that's getting expensed?
No, that's in a separate fund, so that's in Fund Four, which is construction, so that will be offset by, um, some of the borrowing that we do for the roof and, um, the subsequent borrowings that we do.
So what...
So just to add to this hundred and thirteen thousand, the prior year was thirty-three thousand. On page eleven, um, Fund Four, construction services, four thousand, a hundred and thirteen.
So just to be clear, that's all the work that led up to the two bond requests? That's the scoping work that was necessary to get there? Certainly work not wasted, hopefully, so we'll go make another go at it.
And the rest of these are some grants that the school has. Twenty-one C, the after-school program that Jill talked about earlier, and Johnson other, you know, the Rowland, now we may...
So what happened with Rowland that would show as being significantly off? Am I correct?
So Rowland, um, I think this is pretty much the total, and, you know, we, you, sometimes grants, you know, we have, um, a certain period with which to spend the funds, and I think Rowland is pretty open-ended as to how we spend the funds going forward. So this budget here could be the entire grant's budget for that grant.
So do you expect the overall outlook on the deficit budget, actual, the difference, to change much between now and October, when we start thinking about our budget?
No, I don't, I don't expect it to change all that much.
So our starting point is we have to start in with a deficit of three hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Yes.
And?
And?
The contract, um, increase, so, all of this increases from the contract?
Oh, right, no, I understand that, I'm just, I'm just sort of looking at this number. I'm thinking that that's the starting point.
Mm-hmm. Yes. There you go.
Surplus from the prior.
The prior year surplus is booked as negative here.
Right, because we...
Oh, okay.
That's a million dollar difference.
Right.
Year over year.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, next month, Kathy, will you give us a report on this current fiscal year and where we are?
So what happens is, you know, the bulk of the expenses are teacher-related salaries and benefits, and they really only begin September first, 'cause everything for July and August would be in the prior year. So, to me, I don't think the report is very meaningful until we get to after budget, budgeting. So probably not till December or January, when I bring back another year-to-date report.
Um, except to the extent that there may be budget swings that we're aware of sooner. It would just allow the opportunity to have the discussion and, you know, follow that as we look at...
Okay.
Should I be really concerned, or only mildly sweating over these numbers?
Um, I think it's a little disheartening that we're starting out budgets, budget, um, for the new year already down by three hundred thousand dollars. But, I mean, I think we saw that, um, you know, there's, you know, the deficits are from areas that we can't control.
Right.
Um, you know, and looking ahead to, um, FY fourteen, you know, we do have a special ed cost. We are a high-spending district. We're already looking at spending maintenance funds that we have not budgeted. Um, so, you know, we already had both of those, um, from, from the start. Um, you know, I know special ed, there's been some success at bringing some, some students back into the district. And hopefully, that will work out to be in our favor financially.
I think it would be helpful as we go into budget season, and as we especially start to explain to voters, you know, what the new budget's looking like, if we could have a really simple outlay of, you know, of this deficit, here is the contribution from special ed, and here is the contribution from transportation. And I know I can pull that out of the numbers, but just sort of summarizing, you know, pie chart or the big, you know, the big blocks there would be helpful. Okay, anything else on that? Kurt, you wanna take us through Hanaford?
Yes, uh, just a few things that have been done there. We, uh, approved a solar project to go ahead. Uh, so there'd be, there'll be a solar farm built on the north campus at, uh, at Hanaford, and, uh, it's actually been, been sourced to a local provider, Crystal Electronics, for fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, they were the only bidder, uh, so, uh, I think, uh, if you remember from last month, I talked about how they were the only bidder because we already had all the solar panels and storage, and so it was mostly installation and configuration. Uh, so you'll see more on that as we go forward. We've talked about other projects, uh, construction and equipment projects that, uh, that are going forward there. We looked at, uh, what the repercussions of, uh, Vermont gas would be if we use Vermont gas at the Hanaford Center. Uh, we're estimating that we'll save nearly twenty-six thousand dollars in energy and reduce the, um, CO2 emissions by seventeen percent. And the other possibility is we would convert the vehicles at Hanaford to natural gas and that would save another four thousand dollars. So that's, uh, that's the effect of the pipeline, uh, being used and, uh, possibilities that it has in the, uh, Hanaford Center. Uh, we hired, I'm looking through my reports here. We hired a new health education instructor. Gosh, I had it all set, and now I lost it, my place. Uh, Deborah Gothier, I don't know if anyone knows her. Deborah Gothier? No? Okay, well... She's the new medical professions instructor at the Hanaford Center. And, um, we found a bus, uh, we bought a bus that's, has a value of about sixteen thousand dollars for five thousand dollars. And that's gonna be used, um, to transport students between the facilities, um, going forward.
What do the enrollment numbers look like from the JENS?
Uh, this year, we're gonna get, or this, this month, uh, unfortunately, our meeting is the two days before that meeting, but this month, we'll get a six-year rolling average. So I can't tell you unless you want me to read it. Here, six semester average. This is a draft. I can't do it on the fly, but I'll, I'll know that next month. 'Cause it, uh, depends on who's enrolled and anticipated being enrolled, uh, enrolled in the second semester. So, I've got all the numbers, if you're gonna look at them. Yeah. Yeah. So I'll try to have that for you, um, on the 14th. Makes sense? Any other questions about Hanaford? Pretty cool, you've never been there. They, uh, they give away lots of food when you go there, so, uh, that's a good thing. We always have, uh, food at our meetings, for some reason, must be 'cause there's a kitchen there, you know, the kids...
That doesn't date to nineteen fifty-five.
Uh, you should see that kitchen, yeah, it's, it's pretty, pretty amazing. Uh, I've been, I've been on the, uh, the Hanaford First Center Board now for almost two years, so... I feel like I'm in my sophomore year, um, in college, so the first year, I listened a lot. Uh, this year, I feel like I'm getting more, um, more into understanding what's going on, and, uh... The, the thing that distresses me the most, I guess, is the fact that, um, some of the best programs there are, are not being enrolled. So, uh, if you haven't heard me talk about this before, um, I was set to, to hear that the green buildings program was cut. Uh, it was primarily because there were no students signing up, and there were no, uh, local sponsors, which I found hard to believe, but it's true. So, uh, you know, those are the kinds of things that we need to look at when we look at, uh, the entire education of our students. Uh, it's not just here, but it's also, uh, at the Hanaford Center. So that's my report.
All right, thank you. Business matters, bills. Does anyone wanna make a motion?
You do, I would like to move that we approve bills in the, um, amount of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, or four hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
Okay, wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion? On the paper?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
They've all been signed.
Yes, they have. Finally got that one, yeah, right. Uh, roof loan documents.
Right, so, since those bills include the first payment on the contract, we need to borrow the money.
So, um, I have here the capital improvement note, six hundred thousand dollars at a rate of one point six five percent. Um, so, this is assumed that we would, um, either pay it off over the five years, if not rolling it into another borrowing that the voters agree to. So in a year, we would pay, um, one-fifth of this, um, and then, um, renew for the balance if that doesn't work.
Is that rate fixed for the five-year term?
It's fixed for one year. So, um, the, the bank does not extend a note past one year. So every year, we, I would come back to you with another note that would be one-fifth less in the event that this is not rolled into, um, another, another borrowing.
So this needs signature by the chair, by the clerk?
For everyone and by the clerk, and I do need a motion to approve.
Okay.
And it's six hundred thousand?
Six hundred thousand.
And, and one other question, so it's a one-year note, and is it automatically renewable?
No, so, um, I mean, um, it is on, as far as the loan approval process goes, it is automatically renewable. The board would have to, the board would have to sign documents every year. The voters do not have to approve it.
And is the rate tied to an index of some sort, or?
Um, it, it doesn't say here. So it's a tax exempt index.
And who's the lender?
Peoples, United Bank.
And that's where we do all our banking?
It's where, where you do all our banking.
Okay, so did we get any other quotes on this?
We're not allowed to. We have an, have to, we have an exclusive arrangement with Peoples.
Any take a motion?
Uh, I'll make the motion that we, are we approving, or are we executing?
Entering, executing.
Execute a promissory note in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars for a one-year term at a rate of one point six five percent to finance the roof and the roof.
Second? 'Cause I, Kurt, did you just second that?
Nope.
Oh, you did not?
Trying to get carried.
Oh, I was second.
Oh, okay. I'm chairing the meeting, I'm, I'm not...
I was second.
Okay, very good. All those in favor? Are there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So all of you will need their three places to sign.
Have you signed any files or questions? Um, I'm just curious, why, why would it be exclusive that you couldn't go out and, and, you know, convince the other?
Well, because we have a relationship with them, I mean, we, they, I think they grant us certain courtesies because we, um, we don't go out, but that's made quite clear that they're, you know, we go to them for all borrowing. We would have to go out to bid for the whole banking relationship. Um, and I think that's quite common, Carol, really.
Understood, they carry the annual dots that we move in anticipation of receipt of tax revenues, and so it's just a long-term relationship with that particular bank. I mean, it was Chittenden Bank before that, before Peoples Bank bought Chittenden Bank, which happens to be the same bank that the state of Vermont uses for the exact same purpose, so, um, I think it's precedent, but... That's a fair question. Uh, any policy matters tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, none. Any personnel matters tonight?
None.
Yes.
Um, wait, 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 there's one other, uh, which is I think we got a late-breaking advisor. I was gonna do that separately.
Sorry, I entered that in, yes.
So we need to move some coaches and advisors?
Want me to do that?
Well, sure!
Uh, we have a list of advisors for instrumental music director, Sue Daniel, high school student council, Teresa Smith, choral music director, Karen Jordan, audiovisual, Chris Brady, National Arts Society advisor, Lynn Kayhart, math league advisor, Lynn Kayhart, graduation coordinator, Rose Russet, and musical director, Robert Dunn.
So are these, is this a complete list of the advisors, or just...
No.
Just the three at this point.
At this point, okay, so we do this probably on a seasonal basis?
Yes.
I missed, it was a short list. It's mostly, it sounds like it's a lot of it's the musical, and then, uh, the annual startup. So I can take a motion to accept that list of advisors?
Sure.
A second? Okay. Any further discussion? Robert Denny, excellent. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Okay, we have on the list to do board reorganization tonight. We do not have an Addison member, uh, we are missing our second, the JENS member, we are missing our second Ferrisburg member, while we had intended to do that tonight. I don't think it's really prudent, and we've managed to get through this meeting without the need for an actual chair, so... Um, I think we're gonna defer that till next month. Carol?
Just a quick, um, according to law, um, the school board has thirty days to, to see when someone resigns or if you have...
when someone resigns, or if you have, um, an empty seat, you have thirty days to, um, fill that seat.
My understanding is that is the responsibility of the Addison district board to put a member forward for this?
Oh, Addison sends them.
Sorry?
The Addison school board sends them.
That is my understanding, and is that correct? And are they in arrears of this particular piece of statute, yeah?
I don't know, we may, we should, or I have a good feeling.
It was, yeah. Do we know whether it's been brought up with Addison?
Yes.
Okay, I did notice.
Thank you.
Remember Hunt was here, so.
Yes.
Point not lost, I agree. So defer till next, uh, any further discussion items? Executive session, I may cry if we need one, but. Okay, next meeting date, September twenty-fifth, for Addison Northwest Board meeting, six thirty in this building, in this room. Next, uh, Virginia's high school meeting is October fourteenth. It is eight thirty-four, and we are adjourned. We are not adjourned.
Yeah, I just got a message. Demolition's gonna start tomorrow morning.
Okay.
On the rigging, so.
Cool.
Thought you liked them all.
I think we're adjourned.
Oh, I already called them.